Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Workshop Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of our city government. At workshop meetings, the council discusses issues, but no formal action is taken. Following the Healthy Washington Roadmap to Recovery Phase Two requirements, the city council may conduct in-person meetings while continuing to provide remote access to their meetings until the Washington State restrictions are lifted. Therefore, facial masks are required to be worn at all times while in the council chambers. If any individual is unable to comply with this order, then the meeting will be recessed until compliance is met. If compliance is not met, then the individual refuses to leave the chambers, then the meeting will either reconvene or virtually be adjourned. The agenda packet is available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-wa.gov. Excuse me, I'll say that again. Please note that the city council workshops may be accessed through GoToWebinar. This workshop is also being televised live on Pasco TV Channel 191, the Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This and previous council workshop video is available on the city's website. And lastly, the public may submit their comments and their questions by contacting the city manager, or city clerk, or using the feedback form on the city's website page. So thank you once again for joining us tonight and continuing to adhere to our rules on having sanitizers and all the proper safety precautions necessary to conduct our meetings compliantly. So with that, we'll have a roll call.
Council members Alvarado.
Present.
Maloney.
Present.
Milney.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
Mayor Protem Barajas.
Present.
And Mayor Martinez.
Present. Alright, everybody's here, thank you. We all please rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alright, next on the agenda, we'll go to verbal reports from council members. Anybody have anything they'd like to share that they did over the week? Mr. Miloney.
Hey, thank you Mayor. Yeah, last week I attended the Pasco Parks and Rec Meeting, and it was actually a really good meeting with Brent Kubalik and Zach Ratkai, Dan Doda, and they had some really cool things that they talked about, such as that the youth softball is opening at the end of April, that Pasco Memorial Pool will open this summer, the Chapel Hill Park, the construction on it has already started, and one other thing I thought was pretty neat was that the equipment that they use for the softball fields, they were able to use it to clear out the snow because we got fifteen miles of sidewalk and get that done in two days. And then also, I went down to Chihuahua Park, and yep, they had done a lot of cleaning, new curbing, and they took out a lot of old brush. And then also, the slide at Terravita was found in Burbank, and they said they are gonna have it reinstalled. It was a really good meeting and a lot of updates.
Wonderful, thank you, Councilmember Miloney. Anyone else? Yes, Councilmember Miloney.
Uh, Maloney, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to report that I attended the Pasco Public Facility District Board Meeting this last week on Tuesday, and I believe Mr. Miloney was able to join us virtually as well. We heard a little bit of an update on where that project's going, so we, financial analysis has been done, and we're really starting to dial in what exactly is the package for what would be a potential ballot measure for the voters of Pasco to be able to, they may see on the ballot. So there's a lot still to be done to really define what that looks like, so a lot more to come, and I'm looking forward to the rest of the staff's analysis on what exactly that looks like, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anybody, I can't see our virtual council members. Are you guys okay?
I'm good, thanks.
Go ahead, Councilmember Roach.
I just said that I was good.
Oh, okay, thank you, thank you, I'm sorry. And I would just like to note that we had a very successful and very nice tour of the vaccination site with Representative Newhouse and the rest of the mayors from the tri-cities in West Richland, and it was just a really, really exceptional program that Chief Gear and the Fire Department Chiefs from Kennewick, and also our National Guard Army representative who was there with us to show us around, and just the way they have everything organized. It was a little slow on Saturday when we went, it was the last day of the week, they were gonna provide the rest of the vaccines that they had, but the order and just the whole organization of the program was just phenomenal, and it was very nice to get out and see how it all worked, and everybody seemed to be really happy coming in and out of that vaccination site. We had also some good discussions with Representative Newhouse, and actually, you know, just sharing with some of the frustrations and some of the experiences that we've had here with the pandemic, and he was in agreement to go and advocate for us as much as we could, and just expressing to him how important it is that we in this area get a seat at the table when the discussions and programs are being developed for the next phase and moving forward with this pandemic, so he was gonna try to help out with that, but overall, it was very successful. I'd like to appreciate every one of the volunteers that were out there working, and also Chief Gear and his staff, and everybody out there, it was just, I mean, we keep mentioning Chief Gear, and he's such a vital asset to our city and to what's going on in the tri-cities. And this site, I think everybody's heard, is the site that's providing the most vaccines on a day-to-day basis, and their accomplishment there is just phenomenal, so very proud of them and very happy that we have the right people at the right place there doing the right things to help us keep moving forward in our communities, so thank you very much for that, Chief Gear, and everybody out there. Alright, with that, we'll move right along and go to items for discussions, and the first one is the 2020 Hanford Communities Update, and Dave Zabel, do you wanna, do you wanna kick that off for us?
We'll do. Thank you Mayor, good evening Council. So this evening, we do have David Replug with Tri-Deck, but in his capacity here, he's our Executive Director for Hanford Communities, and David's gonna share with us, give us an annual update regarding the Hanford Communities Committee's activities, and I'd note that Councilmember Roach is the council's representative on that board, so.
Good evening, Mr. Replug. Very happy to have you here tonight, thank you for everything you do for us.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and it's good to be here.
Excuse me, would you please just click on the mic there, I don't think it's on right now. There you go, thank you.
Yeah, I think this is the first time I've presented and seen many of you guys for over a year, so it's great to be back in front of you, and this time I am wearing a somewhat different hat because I'm here as Executive Director of Hanford Communities. I also, as Mr. Zabel said, I also serve as Vice President for Federal Programs at Tri-Deck, but as we get into my presentation, I'll talk to you a little bit more about the transition and both operating Hanford Communities as well as our current work at Tri-Deck. And so with that, if we could just go ahead and bring up the presentation? Okay, great, and I'm assuming if I, yeah, alright, cool. Alright, so I believe that you all have received annual updates about Hanford Communities in the past, and those came from Pam Brown Larson, who recently retired as the Executive Director of Hanford Communities. She was the Executive Director since its inception in 1994, and the organization was formed then in large part by the local governments, so they could have a more coordinated voice on Hanford issues and the community's involvement on Hanford issues. When you kind of, you flashback twenty-five years or so from now, I think the Hanford site and the posture and the community's understanding of what was happening at Hanford was really not what it is today. There was still a lot of, coming out of the era of secrecy, and there was still maybe a lot of just lack of really knowledge and trust about what was happening at Hanford, and so I believe at the time, the local governments felt like they needed to have a voice and to make sure that they were educated and actively involved in what was going on out there, so they decided to form Hanford Communities at the time. And the purpose was to increase public awareness and involvement in Hanford cleanup, to advocate for the community's priorities, and to provide technical and analytical resources to review, evaluate, and monitor conditions and policies at Hanford. Today, the Hanford Communities has two boards. One is the Governing Board, which sets policy for Hanford Communities, and that board consists of an elected official from each of the seven member jurisdictions, and so you can see the entire list, the entire group here, including Councilmember Roach, representing the City of Pasco. And the Governing Board meets generally quarterly, and occasionally will have special meetings and workshops as necessary to address any timely issues. And then the Administrative Board just handles the administrative tasks associated with Hanford Communities, and so again, in most cases, the administrative executive for whichever jurisdiction is the Administrative Board Representative, including Mr. Zabel, here for the City of Pasco. And so as I referenced earlier, 2020 was, in addition to all the other things we know about 2020, it was a year of changes with Hanford Communities as well. As Pam Brown Larson was approaching retirement, members of the Hanford Communities Administrative Board approached Tri-Deck to see if there might be an opportunity for some collaboration and partnership on it. I think the circumstances twenty-five years ago are maybe perhaps different than they are now, and frankly, there's maybe a little bit of overlap between what Tri-Deck has done and working on Hanford-related issues and what Hanford Communities has done, and so I think the sense was at the time that it makes sense to have those both kind of operate under one roof. And so that transition happened in May of last year, and I referenced a little bit that there's a public information component to Hanford Communities, and that comes in the form of a grant with the Department of Ecology, and that's been going on for over twenty years as well to support a variety of different efforts in the past that included a couple of videos every year, quarterly newsletter, and a number of other things, but those were the things that you may have seen previously. And so with the new grant with the Department of Ecology included a updated scope of work that we felt like allowed us to sort of bring the public involvement, public information effort into maybe a little bit more of the way that people consume information now, and so we have built a new website, it's now hanfordcommunities.org, invite you all to go there. The goal is, over time, to build this website out into sort of a portal for anybody, especially a member of the tri-city community who wants to know more about what's going on at Hanford, they see something in the news, what's up with the 324 Building, or whatever it might be, that they can go there and get information about that, but also to know how to be involved if they want to participate in the public comment period, when we go back to more in-person meetings, participate in open houses and public meetings and that sort of thing as well. And then we've also stepped up our communications in the form of social media, we now have a pretty active Facebook page, Instagram, and YouTube as well, and then we're going to be sending out our first quarterly newsletter under this new approach tomorrow, and rather than doing the hard copy newsletters, we're going to transition to an electronic newsletter this time around. And so I think many of you, if not all of you, will be getting that in your email inboxes tomorrow. So continuing with the theme of changes, 2020, as we go into 2020, I'm sorry, 2021 now, we have a number of other changes. We have a new administration, and with that new administration, there are changes at DOE. First, we have Jennifer Granholm, who is the former governor of Michigan, who was just sworn in last week as the Secretary of Energy. Before that, Dave Heisinger was serving as Acting Secretary. We have David Turk, who is the nominee to be Deputy Secretary, we expect that he'll be voted on here in the next couple of weeks, and then there will be, at some point in the not-too-distant future, an Assistant Secretary for Environmental Management, which is what Hanford Cleanup is a part of, and then, yeah, as we look over the next few months, we'll start to get a better understanding of how the new administration views and prioritizes Hanford and their approach to cleanup. We'll know a lot more, I believe, after the first President's Budget comes out, again, probably in the next couple of months. And then we've seen like the first stage of a DOE reorganization, where right now, the Office of Environmental Management reports to the Secretary. It very well may reorganize again in the future, but right now, it's a direct report, so that's different than it was before. We've also had some changes in Congress, we have a new majority in the Senate, which means that Patty Murray, Senator Murray, is a senior member of the majority of the Energy and Water Appropriations Subcommittee. Senator Maria Cantwell is a senior member of the Energy and Natural Resources Committee. Congressman Newhouse also remains on the Appropriations Subcommittee on the House side, and I highlight these Energy and Water Appropriations because that's where funding for Hanford as well as PNL comes through, and so having those members of our delegation in place there really does help us a lot. And then Congressman Newhouse also is taking on the new role as Chair of the Congressional Western Caucus, which gives them sort of a greater amplified voice on Western issues, whether it be Department of Energy in our case, or other issues like the Department of Interior, National Park Service, related to the Manhattan Project National Park. And then also importantly, Representative Kathy McMorris Rogers is now the ranking Republican on the Energy and Commerce Committee in the House. Some more changes, in 2021, we've seen two prime contractors transition. So what was Mission Support Alliance has now become Hanford Mission Integration Solutions, MSA to HMIS, or HMS sometimes people refer it to, and then CH2M Hill Plateau Remediation Company, or CHPRC, is now a Central Plateau Cleanup Company, or CPC Co. That transition was finalized on January 25th, and those contracts are now in place. And then we've also seen a release of a draft request for proposals on a large, what you might call a mega-contract, for tank closure, which will combine both tank operations as well as operations of the Direct Feed Low-Activity Waste Petrification Facility. This contract would be a ten-year, $27 billion contract, so on average, $2.7 billion and change a year, which is significantly more than your average even prime contract at Hanford, so it's gonna be interesting to see how that moves forward. And so now, I wanted to share a few of the priorities and then hopefully leave a few minutes for any questions that you may have as well. So every year, Hanford Communities puts together what we call our Issue Agenda, and that is the priorities for Hanford Communities. All of the Governing Board members have a chance to provide input on it, and it is generally approved in the late winter, early spring of each calendar year, and so I hope you all have in front of you or in your packets the draft, it's really the near-final 2021 Issue Agenda, and I don't expect that that will change, but traditionally, we've just held off on finalizing it until sort of the last minute in the Congressional Appropriations Cycle, so that's kind of what we're doing again this time. But in that, you'll see most of the priorities for Hanford Communities, but a couple I wanted to specifically touch on, the first is the High Level Waste Interpretation, you may have seen a few things in the newspaper in the last few days, but not to get too in the weeds here, but the High Level Waste Interpretation idea is to manage and treat Hanford's waste based on what it consists of, and its radioactivity and its content rather than its origin. There's an old policy that essentially says you manage all the waste based on its origin as defense waste and treat it all as high-level waste regardless of how high activity it actually is, and so what the Department of Energy has proposed is instead to treat it based on what it actually consists of, which we think can make some common sense, but also could potentially expedite cleanup and make our community safer sooner. And unfortunately, we've had a difference of opinion with the state on this issue. Hanford Communities and Tri-Deck have gone to Olympia on a number of occasions to talk to leadership there and try to help them understand our perspective, and that clearly hasn't happened yet. And about a week and a half ago, they sent a letter to the new secretary asking her to rescind the effort that's underway already with the High Level Waste Interpretation. As a result, Hanford Communities, along with Tri-Deck, sent a letter to the secretary making sure that she understands that from the community's perspective, we very much support the interpretation, and frankly, don't feel that on this issue or many Hanford issues that our state is really speaking for us right now. We also, kind of in the same vein, have some concerns about the regulatory approach more broadly and how that might be increasing costs and slowing progress with Hanford Cleanup. Real quickly, the other priorities that we've identified are, among, some of the top, top priorities are the Direct Feed Low-Activity Waste Facility. That's the facility that's close to, that actually was just declared construction complete in January, and they're beginning the startup and commissioning phase, that's gonna classify a good portion of the low-activity waste. That's what we've been working towards with the Waste Treatment Plan for the last twenty-plus years, and so it's gonna be a very significant event once that actually goes operational. It will importantly also will sort of change the Hanford Site posture, because it's not been a real twenty-four-hour, seven-day-a-week, three-sixty-five-day-a-year operating site for now over thirty, about thirty years, and so going into full-time, 24/7 operations is gonna be a change, and so I know they're working to sort of integrate that new culture and mindset into Hanford Site operations today. Couple of the other ones, the Waste Encapsulation Storage Facility, that's where all the cesium and strontium capsules are stored, in an aging facility in the central part of the Hanford Site. It's very safe there now, but if there was a beyond, what they call beyond-design basis event, that could be a really bad day, and so we want those out of there and into dry cask storage as quickly as possible. And then the 30296 Waste Site underneath the 324 Building, that's very close to the Richland City Limits and also very close to the Columbia River, and that's a very highly radioactive soil contamination underneath the 324 Building, and given its proximity to both the river and to the city, we believe that's a top priority as well. And then lastly, just quickly touch on another issue that, there was a guest column in the Tri-City Herald about a few weeks ago, but with these new prime contract transition changes, the way that subcontracting has been done has sort of shifted as well, and the overall effort and the goal to move more towards what's called managed tasks or meaningful work, the subcontracting is a good thing, but the process of getting there is potentially jeopardizing some businesses, so we're trying to work with DOE to see if they can figure out a way to do that a little bit more smoothly. And I think that is it, yeah, and so that's just a quick overview of sort of the transition with Hanford Communities. Me personally, I'm sort of splitting my time, so I consider myself to be a fifty-fifty employee, fifty percent Hanford Communities and fifty percent Tri-Deck, and then Tri-Deck staff will occasionally support various efforts with Hanford Communities, but I think, and I would welcome anybody's thoughts, but I feel like it's been a pretty smooth transition, especially considering the sort of unusual circumstances that we've seen in 2020 and going into 2021, but looking forward to continuing in both roles and working with all of you in both roles as well, and thank you for allowing me to give this update.
Well, Mr. Replug, thank you very much, it's a great review and information you've brought to us today. Does anybody from the council have any questions for Mr. Replug tonight? You know, go ahead, Councilmember Serrano.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for that amazing presentation, I really appreciate that a lot, boiled down into a little. One thing I would like you to clarify is obviously these contracts are moving towards closure, right, and from what I understand, that's minimizing footprints, not closing facilities, you know, the entire thing, so I think it's important that the community understands that. Can you give a quick roll-through maybe how like the CPC Co. is gonna close out a portion of the site, but maybe not the entire scope?
Certainly, yeah, so the long-term vision is to reduce all of the cleanup activity at the Hanford Site, which is, you know, 586 square miles, a very large site, to reduce it down to the Central Plateau as much as possible, which is for getting maybe twenty, twenty-five square miles, but right where the Waste Treatment Plan is, and so that's where all the waste tanks are, all the most kind of highly radioactive buildings are for the most part, with some exceptions. And so the goal is to, with the Central Plateau Cleanup Company, to remediate both the waste sites as well as take down some of the old buildings, again, to sort of shrink the footprint to the Central Plateau, but frankly, that's still gonna take some time. We have a number of buildings along the River Corridor, the K area, where the K East and K Rest reactors are, the 324 Building is far outside the Central Plateau too, and so the goal is to eventually get us there, but we're not gonna be there for a while. I'm not sure if that really addressed your question.
No, that's perfect. Again, I think when folks hear closure, right, you know, the dream is that it's gonna be remediated and eventually like houses will be built there, and whether that happens, you know, my crystal ball is far too foggy for that, but I do appreciate you explaining, I mean, that's as I understood it. Ultimately, the goal is to shrink these outer-lined buildings, these remediated, or to-be-remediated waste sites, to a smaller footprint in one centralized location, so I appreciate you confirming that, and I'm hoping that we have more than one or two people listening and they heard that, that that's kind of what Hanford's working towards, recognizing it's a rock, a big rock going up a big hill, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Serrano, anybody else?
I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Miloney.
Thank you Mayor. David, I had a quick question. I know a couple of years ago, I was out at the Hanford Site, I took a tour, and they had a facility where they were taking, pumping the water out, cleaning it, and then putting it back in. What, do you have an update on that? What is the timeframe? I know it's been a couple of years since I was out there, I know they said that eventually the water would be cleaner than what it ever was before, do you have any kind of idea on that, or?
Yeah, so I would assume that the facility that you visited was called the 200 West Pump and Treat Facility. It's a fairly new facility that was built within the last ten years or so during the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, and on average, in the last few years, especially with that new sort of state-of-the-art facility, the Hanford Site has been treating a little over one billion gallons of groundwater every year, and so the plan, what they do is, they try, and I should also add that there's a number of different pump-and-treat facilities across the Hanford Site. The most well-known one is that new-ish 200 West Pump and Treat, but there's a number of wells, quite a few really, all across the Hanford Site where they both draw water, groundwater up, and then they take, and they try to do that strategically to get to the most contaminated groundwater, and kind of in the central part of the site, and then treat it, clean it, and then they inject it back in on the exterior part of the Hanford Site, and the idea is to sort of use the now-clean groundwater to drive the more contaminated groundwater back towards the central part of the site and away from the river, and then they'll continue to pump and treat that, and kind of sort of do it over and over and over again. And I don't know that they've projected any time where they feel like they'll be sort of done with the pump-and-treat, but I think it's been one of the kind of unheralded success stories at the Hanford Site, because it just kind of churns along all the time, and it does treat a billion gallons a year, that's a lot of water, and it also serves as sort of a bit of a safeguard if there should be some unexpected contamination into the groundwater or the soils. One of the biggest concerns is that contamination, a high volume of it reaches the Columbia River, and so having that whole sort of infrastructure to treat that water and bring it back into the center of the site is a bit of a sort of backup safeguard as well.
Thank you, I just know a lot of people seem to not realize all the different efforts that we're going to, whether it's the ground, soil, or the water, and I was just really impressed with that, I thought that was a great program that you guys, that they're doing, so thank you, thank you for the clarification.
Happy to.
Alright, anybody else? Well, I would just like to say, Mr. Replug, thank you for the efforts that you're providing. I know we have Councilmember Roach, who is a representative for us in the Hanford Communities, and, you know, I was on it before, and I could tell you that, you know, there's still many, many more years to come to do the cleanup we have to do, but I can appreciate this committee, this commission, because you guys are the voice for all of us in the tri-city area, and, you know, to get into the weeds, and I'm glad you kind of mentioned a little bit about the definitions and what we're shooting for, and the bottom line is that although there's years and years left, they're using technologies that are just amazing out there, and I know that, like I said, like I said, there's a lot of years to come, but if we can just take those steps forward, we're hoping that, you know, we can take those big bites one at a time and get to the cleanup site that we're expecting to have, you know, in the years to come, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's good to be here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's good to be here.
All right. Great report. Next, we're going to move on to uh, the DPDA Funding Agreement Extension. And tonight is Mr. Rick White on the line. Director Rick White.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I am. Thank you.
All right. Uh, good evening, Mr. White. And I also see that we have a couple of members from the Pasco Downtown Development Association here, just so you know. Um, but anyway, go ahead and go, kick us off with this, please.
Um, thank you again, uh, Mayor and Council. Um, I'm, I'm sure as Council is aware, the city has an existing funding agreement with the Downtown Pasco Development Authority for uh, helping with their efforts to revitalizing downtown. Uh, if Council thinks back to January of this year, the existing agreement was extended for one quarter so that the activities could continue unabated. Um, we're nearing the end of that first quarter. And so we're coming to Council tonight with um, a funding agreement that will uh, serve us at least until the end of this current year, twenty twenty-one. And I did want to point out, Mr. Mayor, that um, the packet might be a tad bit confusing. There are two funding agreements in your agenda report. The first is the existing and the second is the proposed twenty twenty-one. They look just about identical and I didn't realize it. It was a bit confusing until I opened my packet on uh, Friday evening. So I just uh, wanted to make sure the Council understood that. However, um, both the existing and proposed funding agreements contain uh, very similar duties. Uh, and those are outlined in the agenda report. Uh, the new funding agreement though, um, it takes on a couple of additional tasks. There's the business outreach that we're asking the DPDA to accomplish in light of the uh, three fairly major projects that will be affecting downtown, both practically and uh, philosophically, uh, the Lewis Street Overpass Project, the Farmer's Market Revitalization Project. And then our own Public Work Department has a Lewis Street Improvement Project that is also uh, going to take place. And then um, secondly, uh, we anticipate that the downtown master plan effort will be kicked off shortly. And we will uh, be relying on the DPDA for quite a bit of support and outreach for that effort as well. So those have been included um, as additional tasks in addition to management of the Farmer's Market, management of the Pasco Specialty Kitchen and the uh, existing business outreach task outlined in the current funding agreement. We do uh, recommend that due to the complications with the pandemic, um, which significantly complicates things, that uh, the agreement be effective until the end of this year so that we'll be able to reassess the uh, listed tasks that we expect the DPDA to accomplish and the public health circumstances that might be applicable as we near the end of the year. And staff would recommend that uh, at least at this point, the agreement uh, be effective just until the end of twenty-one with uh, reassessment before the year's end. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. White. Any questions or comments by Council? Uh, yes, Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Wyatt and uh, members of DPDA that are here. Um, one of the things that I, I really feel um, at this point, uh, that many folks in our community are feeling is that sense of disconnection, that sense of feeling alone. Um, and so I think it's a good opportunity to really, um, I think to really harness the, our ability to come back together and to do a lot of outreach and a lot of uh, engagement. So I, I'd love to hear more as, as that plan comes, comes about. But uh, really for me, it's really an emphasis on, on engagement and relationship building that is really needed. Uh, I, I very much appreciate uh, the rapport of, you know, being able to put together some of the nuts and bolts that were, uh, you know, needed to be um, taken care of. Uh, obviously organizations need to run smoothly and books need to be clean. Uh, but I certainly know that I, I think a shift in focus to engagement from, from my end, that seems uh, to be a, a, a good priority.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado.
This is Mayor Protem Barajas, if I may.
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Barajas.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'd like to echo uh, Councilmember Alvarado's uh, words here. Um, I, I keep hearing of a disconnect uh, between the businesses and DPDA. So I'm interested in hearing what the plan is and looking into um, the project further. Um, I mean, I'm not opposed to continue the funding and I, I'm sure there's a lot of uh, setbacks because of COVID. But again, um, just uh, looking forward to seeing a little bit more outreach into the businesses uh, as a whole. Um, I, I, some of the stuff that I've heard is that it's been selective um, in who to approach. So again, just looking forward to having that um, connection with the community, with the businesses and looking forward to DPDA uh, making an impact as we move forward.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Barajas. Anyone else? Or Councilmember Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and thank you, Mr. White, for the presentation and members of the DPDA and uh, and DPDA staff for uh, for, for coming out this evening to, to, I guess, see us in person. I'm still, this still feels novel right now. Um, anyways, um, you know, I, I would like to emphasize my, um, like the comments by my two fellow council members. Um, really the communication and outreach really, I think, is going to be key. And, and we have such an excellent opportunity with the um, work we're doing on the, on Peanuts Park and on the overpass to, to really tie into all those businesses and, and create a forcing function for, we must engage. Not just optional, not just trying to improve their businesses, but we have to find a way to be able to reach, um, you know, every member that's go- of the community that's going to be affected by that. And now part of that, of course, you know, is, is on the Downtown Pasco Development Authority and this agreement uh, outlined some of those, some of those. But certainly, um, as I've been downtown, um, over the last year with some of my fellow council members, uh, we've seen that a lot of the businesses, um, they, they also are misunderstanding what the role of the DPDA is compared to the role of the city. And so, um, certainly I think that we need to, we need to make sure that we are also being uh, very good partners and not putting, put, not, not allowing that perception that the DPDA can solve every um, municipal issue for our downtown businesses as well. So um, we need to maintain our active role as a good partner with DPDA to make sure that they're, we're doing our part to make sure they're effective and that the businesses are, are well-served. So the whole combination of the, of the master planning we'll be doing, um, and, and the outreach that DPDA will be doing, I think amplified by what we're doing as a city, uh, will hopefully reach the, reach and, and serve our businesses better. So looking forward to seeing how that all collaborates. I'm certainly supportive of, of continuing this through the end of the year. Uh, we'll have some good idea of how that results going and where, when, you know, what additional pivots we may need to do at that point. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Yeah, so well, well said by our council. If there's nobody else, um, I just want to say that, you know, it's uh, it's go time. I mean, uh, this year is going to be a very vital year and I'm in favor of the funding. But um, yes, uh, everything's been said that needed to be said tonight. And we're, we're hoping and, and confiding in, in your guys' leadership to uh, to make all these things happen. And uh, you know, we, we get one shot at this. Uh, we're, we're getting these big projects uh, in, you know, running, getting them going. And I'm just an- anxiously anticipating progress and, and just, I know there's going to be hiccups along the way, but uh, but this is the year for us to, to get up and get going. So with that, uh, I do see that there's somebody that wants to make a comment. Uh, we'll go ahead and allow for the leadership at the Downtown Pasco Development Association to go ahead and give some words.
Thank you. And thank you for your understanding about the challenges that we got.
Excuse me. Do you have their speaker on? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again. And uh, I'd like to uh, thank uh, the council members for uh, uh, um, you know, sharing that concern that there are uh, some challenges and that we're doing the best we can. Uh, the pandemic um, situation exacerbates a lot of uh, um, the situations that sometimes may be small. But with um, this COVID nineteen, then everything multiplies and, and it's really tough. We have some folks that um, they do feel like they didn't get what they wanted or that what they needed as far as the relief uh, funds that were dispersed. And, and that's normal because people are going through a really stressful uh, time. But um, we did the best we can and uh, we didn't make the, the, the decisions on who gets what. It was based on who qualifies for what and that's what uh, Gustavo um, is in charge of that. And um, you want to say anything, Gustavo?
Yes. Well, first I want to tell you that I'm just thinking about this. I was born and raised in Colima. I went to college in Colima. Hablo español completamente. So having this job was a blessing, you know, just getting here. Now, I didn't know the pandemic was going to happen, but anyway, as, aside from that, I want to tell you that DPDA is running probably the best it's ever run. That's because we cut all the costs and expenses and we focus in putting the money where actually supposed to go, which is the employees. Right now, we're still standing at seven employees, five full-time, two part-time. We have a budget of over six hundred thousand dollars. So the contributions that you're making is actually really nice because you're buying tax credits, so you get money back. But you're also helping us to put a seat into DPDA because the money you're giving us is just a seat for us to work and make more money. You see, I have a bunch of masks in here. We, we got donations fifty-three thousand dollars last year, just in masks. So that tells you that not only me, we are five-one C three, not only me, but my, you know, my coworkers, we always asking for money. Why? Because we still are five-one C three. We still need people to believe in the kitchen because it's for low mother income. We still need people to believe in the farmer's market because it is for the farmers, for local farmers. So basically, that's what we've been doing this whole time. But I can tell you that the hardest piece is like we have to, I thought we were supposed to build community and then economic development. But the issue is the community wasn't there. The people in downtown were divided. They weren't even trusting. They weren't even working together. So it's been, it's been a really tough, tough year, but I can tell you that, I mean, I was born and raised in Mexico, for God's sakes. I mean, this is for me, it's just like walk, walk in the park. But I, what I can tell you is that some of the people do not, they're not used to people like me. Because what they will say is, you know, DPDA should take my trash. DPDA should, you know, clean my street, you know? And yes, people has to come to DPDA. We go to them, but they have to come because we have to collaborate. We have, I don't know if you know the Main Street Model, but we have committees and they have to collaborate. They have to volunteer. They have to donate their time. Yes, we're here to help them out, but we have to collaborate. The people who has said things, we don't like DPDA, we don't like Gustavo, Gustavo is this, Gustavo is that. It's only like six, seven people from like eighty-something and that's because things don't go their way. And I can tell you that I don't like people pushing, the people I work with, and I don't like people pushing me. Because we're doing the best we can with what we have and we're always looking for, if you see me anywhere, I've been always advocating. Wednesday mornings, I'm in the caucus with the legislators in Colima, what do you call that, Olympia, advocating for this town. Like everywhere I go, I always advocate for the business in downtown. But there's a misperception. They think we run by public funds and they think it's their taxes, but that is not correct. But I still thank you all and we're still going to try to bridge those gaps and, and make sure that they understand and they comprehend. We do the best we can, but they still have to collaborate and volunteer with us. That's just the way it is because we're still a five-one C three and we're still underfunded. So thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? We done?
Councilmember Mil- uh, Mil?
Yeah, and I would like to say that uh, I know our, our newer council, uh, we've been a little bit different than the old council as far as we've gone down there three times and uh, we're planning another, another one coming up. And uh, I just know that like for myself, I think there'd be better if there was interaction between a council member, whether it be myself, Ruben or Craig. I know I volunteered for, but again, I've mentioned the last year and a half that I have two meetings on the exact same time, which is frustrating. And I did reach out to you last month and we had a good conversation if, anyway, it could be moved. So I could actually report on some of the good things because I can't be at two spots at the exact same time. Um, so I think that would be a big step in the direction if I could be there or the other two council members, you know, could be at the meeting. Um, so that's been like a frustration of mine, just wa- caring and not being able to attend the meeting. Um, and then I said, the second thing would probably be if, when we do come out, if maybe one of you guys could come along with us. I know a lot of times the only time it works for us is like a Saturday. I'm just saying, I mean, that might be something to, uh, and again, I'm just throwing this out there, but where we could actually have better communication between. I think it's just communication and get you to know because this council, I guarantee, really does care about the downtown. We don't want it to see it go away. We do care about you guys immensely. Um, we just want to see things moving forward, everybody getting along and progress.
Yeah.
And uh, again, a lot of times it's just communication and not letting little rivalries get in. And so I don't know if, if you guys do have the time, uh, if we can.
Yeah, no, let's, let's do that. Uh, you just let us know and Gustavo and I, um, I just had my second shot. And um, they just showed a picture of the Benton County Fe- Fairgrounds. Excellent uh, place. I mean, like that, you know, in twelve, fifteen minutes, I was out, you know? And, and second shot and everything went so smooth. We have a really good, they have a really good uh, system. So what I'm saying is that I, I feel a little more comfortable now if you like, you know, uh, I, you only got one shot?
I haven't got, but I got, I got COVID before, so.
Yeah, he's a survivor.
Probably a couple more months, I guess.
Yeah, um, so just let us know, any of you that like to uh, you know, if you like to adopt a business, like say, hey, I want to, you know, this, this bakery or this um, furniture store or this uh, re- whatever store that you think that you want to adopt and, and then just, well, I'll introduce you, we'll introduce you. Gustavo and I will take you and then you can just um, set up some kind of friend, um, some kind of relationship with the business and then begin, uh, you know, a system of getting to know each other.
Okay. Usually we just go down from one side of the street and we just go down to each business and then ask them if there's concerns, stuff like that. So just trying to get a different perspective of what's going on, um, and find out for ourselves. So I just know that we really do care. We really do care about you guys and the downtown and.
Thank you.
Any kind of more communication with us, I think, would be a step in the right direction. And I know for myself would be a step in the right direction if my channel's one of the three of us, and I'm not trying to volunteer you guys, but if we could at least be there in your meetings and kind of have a better grasp of how our money's being spent and uh, as long as it's being spent wisely. So that's, that's my two cents on all this.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you for uh, the new members uh, that you um, um, approved, that they will be uh, now uh, board members. Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just want to amplify something that um, um, Councilmember Milley was saying is um, I did just send out an email this afternoon. So I, I'm so, um, to asking, um, setting up the time for, for our, our next tour down there and uh, reaching out to Gustavo. So I've, I've taken that step, which, you know, it's incumbent on me to, to, to make sure to reach out to him. So um, I, I haven't checked my mail yet, see if there's a response, but I'm positive I'll get a, get a response. So I've reached out to them to let them know. So we got that, that coordination set up. So um, just wanted, wanted to let you know on that and looking for that. And, and part of this, you know, it's been really important to us is, um, it's easy sometimes for um, for us to get what ends up being a filtered view of the downtown. And so, so making sure that we have an opportunity to go down directly and, and um, and see that without maybe expectations being placed on the, by the businesses on what we're going to do and what we're not going to do has been very effective, I think. So I think a good combination of those, of those two things. Um, I'm also very excited to meet the um, 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 new, new members of the Specialty Kitchen. I'm positive there's been some new businesses there. I think, I think I heard that the other window has now been, been filled as well. So at least that comfort, that was a conference room has been uh, taken over by a business. So really looking forward to seeing who else has joined the Specialty Kitchen as well. So that's always an exciting program. The sheer number of businesses that are working through there and the, and the volume of business they're doing is, is I think pretty fantastic. And one of the, uh, I think less understood um, aspects of, of this whole program of what Downtown Pasco is bringing to our community and to our businesses. So anyways, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Maloney. Councilmember Alvarado?
Yeah, just uh, to, I guess, cap off some of the comments, we, we certainly, um, a- as much as uh, um, I guess, a- a- any members of council, I think the three of us have gotten a little bit more uh, focused on, on downtown. But I, I think more than anything, we want to, we want to uh, know, know that the DPDA and the downtown businesses and folks feel, feel our support. Obviously, we don't have all the time in the world to go and listen, but uh, to be able to uh, to take some time to listen to people. I think that that's a part of our job and so we, we want to be able to do that. And the more that we do it together, I think the, the more folks will, will be able to know that, well, people actually are here to listen and to, um, you know, just be able to have that relationship building. And so we just want to express our support, uh, and, and that like, hey, we're in this together, let, let's uh, let's make this a better Pasco.
What was I going to say? For DPDA, we offer free webpages. We do graphic design. We've been offering graphic design for free. Cause that's my salary. I can do graphic, I'm a graphic designer and I have a couple of the graphic designers that help me out. There's people who has taken advantage of that, but a lot of the people in downtown don't want to, so you cannot force them. We also offer free webpages. We created webpages. And we also, right now, we offer, we've been making commercials for people at no cost. They can use them in any radio station, but we also have our own radio station in Spanish for the same reason, so they can listen to their radio station within their business. And, you know, they can hear their own commercials. We, we've done videos, I mean, we've done so many little different things, like what you have in your hands. This is made of uh, the, the outfit of the native people in Colima. This is, this is the garment they use. So we created this. Uh, obviously, we spent seventy-two thousand dollars in events because guess what? We have a farmer's market and we were busy, 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 busy. Uh, one of the people from the farmer's market says it's the best farmer's market in over thirty years. Best. Uh, one of the people from the farmer's market said it's the best farmer's market in over thirty years, best, and we did really good. You know, so anyway, and we can always chat, you can always come to downtown, say hi, and we can chat, and you can see, and I'm pretty sure, I guarantee, everywhere we walk, we walk, you'll see our, our, our signature, because we have done stickers, tickets for the, for the ground, a lot of different things that we can do, but it's only the, my expertise and the expertise that people work with. We're not gonna be making miracles, and we cannot do things, uh, other people's way, because we have to help us, and then we have to help them. This, we created with a couple of designers and myself, and it's all about make, you know, people can stay at home and play with their kids, this is our third game. We have an Oka, and we have a Loteria. So we, we've done plenty of masks, we collaborated with Mulama County, Wenatchee. I mean, you know, all this support from a lot of the business and, and other people outside is tremendous. We're probably the only Main Street that gave over a million dollars, you know, in help for COVID-nineteen related issues, so there's people in downtown who got it, over thirty thousand, over seven thousand, and they're still mad, but it has nothing to do with us. It's, it's the situation, it's hurting all of us, but we're doing our best, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, this is, uh, Councilwoman Barajas, real quick.
Yes, M- Mayor Portem, go ahead.
Yes, just wanted to say, I, my, my view, the, the, what I said was not in, uh, to offend anyone. Um, and like I said, and also supporting what, uh, our councilmember Maloney and Alvarado said, um, our concern is to, um, bring unity with the businesses and, uh, be the connection for the city. Um, uh, Mr. Portugal, you remember, I have been a volunteer of Downtown Pasco since two thousand and eleven. Pandemic hit, uh, haven't been out there at all, uh, but again, i- i- if someone knows the streets and the businesses of downtown, uh, I've gone out there door-to-door, introducing myself to everyone, a- advocating for several services that the D D, D P D A has offered throughout the years. Um, so, I do look forward to, um, after the pandemic, or, uh, when it's socially safe for me, due to medical reasons, to be out there on the streets and, and take a tour of the newer businesses, I'd be happy to do so, and I'll reach out. Uh, but again, just wanna reiterate, I did not mean any offense, uh, in, in bringing up the concerns that have been brought forward to me. Um, thank you, uh, for the work, and like I said, uh, I do look forward to, uh, progress and, uh, better relationships with the, the businesses and D P D A, and I know that's gonna take some work.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Portem Barajas. Alright, and thank you once again, thank you, Mr. White, for, uh, for bringing this on to the agenda, and we'll be looking forward to voting on this next week. Thank you. Alright, next we'll move right along to, um, item C, which is the two thousand and nineteen City of Pasco Financial Audit Recap. And we have a presentation tonight, uh, City Manager Abel, who will be kicking that off tonight?
Uh, Director Sigdala.
Oh, Director Sigdala, are you on the line tonight?
Yes, I am, evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, this is, um, a little bit late than, uh, usual. We had our au- audit update, or what, uh, is also called an exit conference with State Auditor's Office in the middle of December, uh, and during the whole holiday season, uh, and, uh, coming back to January. My apologies, I forgot to, uh, bring an update back to Council, and, uh, thank you, Councilmember, um, for, uh, reminding me last week, and hence you have, uh, this presentation. Uh, I'm going to try to be very careful about, uh, explaining the audit overall to you, because I really do not want to, um, use my words to, uh, explain the findings of, uh, the audits overall, uh, as much as I possibly can, however, also use the opportunity to explain the process overall, uh, to the Council as well. Next slide, please. So overall, uh, each year, we get, uh, audited for three very distinct areas. Uh, our first area is, next slide, please, our financial reporting. Uh, and essentially, the city and all cities and counties, uh, at, in the state of Washington, and all throughout the nation, uh, prepare what is called, uh, CAFR, uh, which is a comprehensive annual financial report. Uh, there's a lot of things, uh, that we get audited on, um, in terms of how this report is prepared. Uh, this is a report that is at least, uh, anywhere from two hundred to three hundred pages long, uh, and a lot of, uh, numbers, lots of notifications, notes, comments, uh, things like that, that explain the financial health of the city. Uh, the types of issues that are reviewed in this, uh, specific audit are, uh, if we have been doing our financial entries throughout the year, uh, but also at the end of the year, as per Washington State and GAAP standards, uh, which are, uh, government accounting, uh, principles. Uh, also, if we have overstated or understated the city's financial health. And this part is, uh, also very critically important, especially if we've overstated our health. Uh, because our annual reports are reviewed by our bondholders, uh, by other entities to, um, ensure that we, uh, especially our bondholders, to ensure that we are in good financial health, that we are somebody that they would like to make a loan out to, uh, or buy bonds from. Uh, and also, uh, the third element, which is presentation of the data, uh, that would be per standards, uh, GAAP standards as well. Uh, the presentation of data is essentially, uh, uh, if, uh, we have the overall pages as per, uh, the standards, uh, that are prescribed by GAAP. Any types of issues are categorized based on either the severity or the amount, so it could be either or or both. Uh, severity would be things like overstating, uh, our financial, let's say, our assets. Uh, if we've not been depreciating our assets, uh, in, uh, in a, in a term that we should be, and hence we're making it look like we have, uh, assets that are, that have much more value than they actually do, uh, in reality, that would be overstating your financial health. So those things are looked at, and what our processes are, how we're doing our entries. And then there's an amount, which is essentially that it might be a really, um, small thing, really not a big issue, um, in terms of, um, um, in terms of overall, overall common knowledge, um, uh, accounting standard, but it could be such a large amount that it automatically reaches that level. Next slide, please. So this year, uh, we did have, uh, one issue with our financial statement, which I mentioned to Council last, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, that is the fact that we had, um, identified our ambulance fund as a non-major fund, uh, whereas it should have been a major fund. Historically, uh, ambulance fund has always been a non-major fund. Uh, but given the amount of activity that has increased in that fund over the last three years, um, it has now reached and crossed over that threshold of a non-major fund and become a ma- major fund, and we missed that. Uh, next slide, please. And, um, this was not overstated or understated, it was just a matter of presentation of which column the number should have been presented in. Um, so, at the end of the day, in the page numbers, or even within the same page, our numbers of assets, uh, cash, all of the balance sheet items, expenses, revenues are all the same. Uh, just a matter of within those pages, whether it should have been classified as a major or a non-major fund. It probably would not have been an issue at all if ambulance, uh, did not have a significant amount of activity, but, uh, I believe the activity in ambulance fund last year was about seven million dollars, and hence it crossed that threshold, um, and, uh, became an issue. Uh, we have done a root cause analysis, next slide, please. And, um, essentially, one of the number one, uh, issues that we have found, and, and to be frank, we've been aware of this, uh, is the fact that, um, the complexity of activities that are going on around the city, and the complexity that it creates uh, for our accounting activity. We're still using spreadsheets and Excel, uh, and formulas within it to prepare our annual financial report. And the problem that it creates is exactly what happened here. Um, it works for a certain number of years, and then something changes, and it doesn't anymore. Because when you've got a lot of formulas, a lot of pages to update, you are bound to miss something. Um, we had already acquired a software, uh, to prepare, uh, the financial report. Uh, but with COVID-nineteen, and the fact that, um, our financial preparation time uh, was right in the middle, so right now, we're preparing our financial reports again for two thousand and twenty. And the, the timing of the pandemic really didn't allow us to implement the tool. Um, so this year, we've implemented the tool, and we're going to be utilizing it to, uh, prepare our two thousand and twenty financial report. In fact, we're doing parallels, so we can ensure that, um, we are confident of, uh, the data coming out of the software is accurate. And this, however, is not really the only issue as well, with root causes, there's always a, a couple of things. Uh, our financial system was implemented back in two thousand and thirteen, fourteen. Uh, and, uh, right after its implementation, or at least the major part of its implementation, uh, there was a significant amount of turnover in the finance department. And what that has resulted in is essentially, uh, that we implemented a system, but you, we really didn't have anybody here long enough who was using the tools and recognizing uh, the things that needed to be done around it to support, uh, the operations. And, uh, we had identified this, uh, about two and a half years ago, uh, and we utilized one of our accounting positions to hire a data analyst for the finance department. Uh, and in the last year and a half, we've been working, uh, pretty diligently and with a, a lot of success on, uh, essentially getting the data out of the system and data mining. This is incredibly important, um, because, uh, you can, uh, it was taking us a lot of time, and sometimes the tasks that we were asking our staff to do was almost impossible, uh, because we couldn't pull and download the data and look at, um, and look at the data comprehensively. So we were finding issues with setups on a, uh, one-off basis. Uh, we're still working on that, there's still a long ways to go to get, uh, all of the reports that, uh, that the department needs, but we've made a significant amount of pro- progress so far. We've also had, uh, limited staff hours to prepare the report as well. And, uh, that is where our, uh, the second issue of difficulty with extracting the data, um, which essentially, uh, takes up a lot of time to even get to, uh, an analysis and review. Uh, but then we also had some pretty critical issues that we needed our staff to completely focus on and get things cleaned up. Uh, I'm happy to report that we've been, we've finished all of those really critical tasks that, uh, we needed to get in order, and, um, in fact, starting two thousand and twenty-one, most of two thousand and twenty, we've been working on a uh, reorganization of the department itself, to essentially now move to a phase two, uh, which is moving the finance department into a more standard finance department, uh, and, uh, working on things more proactively, uh, than reactively. And, uh, please feel free to stop and, uh, ask me if you have any questions. Uh, next slide, please. The other audit that, uh, anytime the city gets, uh, any federal grant, we are obligated, uh, to participate, uh, in, uh, what is also called a single audit, uh, for federal grants compliance. So State Auditor's Office essentially acts as an auditor for the federal government. Next slide, please. Uh, in this, um, in this, uh, audit, uh, we're not only looking at have we, uh, met the federal, the state, uh, uh, the GAAP standards, but also the specific grant requirements as well. Uh, also, in this, uh, audit, uh, our contracts, and how we did contracts, how we procured, uh, consultants or contractors are closely looked at, uh, as well as the, uh, presentation of the data as well. And again, uh, on this severity or amount of the issue is what takes it over the, over its different thresholds. Next slide, please. Uh, in this audit, we had no issues, uh, and, um, uh, we had, uh, I believe, at least three or four, uh, federal grants, uh, that were reviewed. Uh, and usually, they look at almost all of the federal grants, all of the projects that are are receiving, uh, funds from the federal grants, and we had no significant, uh, deficiencies in our internal control. Uh, all of the, uh, presentation of the data was done according to, uh, GAAP, and, um, uh, and nothing, not even notes to, to report on this category. Next slide, please. Uh, in, in my opinion, uh, this accountability audit is the most important audit uh, for the city, um, and, um, the reason for that is, uh, next slide, please. Um, this is where all of our controls are evaluated, and, um, in terms of, do we have good cash management? Uh, do we have good processes for changes to hours in payroll? Um, do we have, um, our managers who are reviewing the time sheets? Uh, are we paying people accurately? Um, those kinds of, uh, really critical operations, day-to-day operations. Uh, also, do we follow our policies? Um, and do we meet, uh, the federal, state, and other required standards that we are obligated to meet? Um, and, uh, since this audit looks at everything, uh, and of course, you can't come in and look at everything every year. Uh, what the State Auditor's Office does is it picks the highest-risk items, uh, on a rotational basis. And, um, and they're looking at risks, so many times payroll is a big one. Uh, cash management is a big one. Um, they're also looking to make sure that we are restricting our funds, like for example, that we're not receiving bond money, and, uh, just leaving it in a, a quote-unquote, regular cash, uh, because those are restricted funds, and they can only be used for certain activities, and so they need to be in their own line item by themselves. Next slide, please. Um, in this as well, um, we passed, uh, the audit, there was no, um, issues with, uh, internal controls, uh, over, um, the areas that were looked. Uh, I do not remember off the top of my head, but, uh, I believe payroll was reviewed, and, um, cash management, our building, um, inspection, and ensuring that we are restricting those funds, uh, were reviewed as well. And with that, I'm here, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Director Rija, now, Councilmember Alvarado, you'll comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, thank you, Director, uh, Sigdala, I, I appreciate, uh, I, I've been learning a lot about this, and, uh, I've had quite a few questions, uh, about this, 'cause I was pretty ignorant, um, about it, and so I appreciate, I appreciate, uh, your patience and guiding me personally through this, but also, um, you know, giving us more information. And I, I also appreciate the role that the, uh, that the Auditor's O- Office, uh, the State Auditor's Office has for cities that, you know, provides a sense of accountability, that gives us a little bit more peace of mind. We don't have the ability to go in and look at all the details, and, and, and neither do they go through every single, um, nine aspect, but, uh, what I do perceive, uh, uh, from you is, uh, sense that you look forward to these almost. Uh, that, um, and that's good to know that we have a, uh, uh, a sense of, um, you know, folks who really, who really care about, uh, transparency, who really care about, uh, wise, uh, management of, of our finances. Uh, my question is, uh, I'm wondering if we do, and this is just me trying to, uh, understand this more, or perhaps even, uh, looking how different organizations work, uh, do we do any kind of internal audits ourselves? Um, that, uh, would, um, set, set us up for mi- missing some of those things that the, that the state may, may not be looking at? I'm just curious.
Yes, we, uh, actually have, uh, not done internal audit yet, but we have started, uh, creating a program around it. And our first, um, one is going to be, uh, in fact, we were planning to do that in two thousand and twenty, and, um, do, uh, cash management, and, uh, looking, um, at all of our, um, points throughout the city where we receive cash, and how those things are handled, and we're, uh, basically doing a deep dive into each of those areas. Uh, and when, uh, COVID pandemic started, uh, we were, uh, essentially, we were not able to look. we were not able to look at the daily transactions there as, as we were closed. We are starting that process and with that, our hope is also to be able to do education as well. Because government accounting is, is incredibly complicated i- in in many ways. It's not the accounting that they teach you at school, I can tell you that. So it's very much on-the-job training that makes it really challenging. And and so we're hoping to do internal audit with a focus on education starting this year.
It's great to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, Director Rija, thank you for the presentation and the report. It looks like the City Pasco is handling our, our situation here very candidly and appreciate all the hard work going on. I, I gotta say, we, this not, this is something we shouldn't take lightly. This is a lot of work. And Pasco has had a history of doing a very good job at, 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 in this area and it's for the hard work that's being done by the staff and everybody involved in this and appreciate the work from city manager to Director Rija and everybody, everybody involved. So, you know, I know that and if I'm not mistaken, City Manager Zabel, you know, we, we actually have to, we, we pay for this service, but it's very necessary for them to come and do these things so that we can be accountable and to make sure that, you know, we are handling the citizens' money appropriately and, and by the, you know, by our policies and, and whatnot. So with that, thank you very much and Director Rija, thank you for your efforts and, and everything you do to keep us in good standing.
Thank you.
Okay, next we'll move on to ordinance, budget adjustment for fire equipment purchase. Chief Bob Gier, are you on the line tonight?
Hi, I'm Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Good evening.
All right. Actually, we're gonna have our new deputy chief, Pat Reed, talk about some adjustments we need to make on some funding out of our equipment replacement fund. It's not truly new budget money, but he will come on and talk to us about both the radio replacement that we need to do and replacement of some light packs. So with that, Chief Reed, are you on? Yeah, it's gonna make me really nervous if he doesn't come on here pretty soon.
Good evening, Chief Reed.
Well, if he's not, then I don't have the budget or the council report in front of me. So, but I will wing it from here since we don't have Chief Reed. So we have two items that we're, and council has information in front of them. One is to a budget adjustment to replace portable radios that our radios, our current portal, portable radios have reached end of life. And they're about fifteen years old and the manufacturer is no longer supporting them. And we've done some changes or movements of dollars within our apparatus, equipment, replacement funds to report, to replace those radios. And the second one is to purchase new light packs, which is the defibrillators. And we have ample dollars in that fund because we've been holding off for many years because the manufacturer keeps telling us they're gonna come out with a new model. And they haven't, and they haven't, and we've held off on replacing those. And we really do need to replace from the ones that we're using right now. Our light pack fifteens are way past the end of their life. And they need to be replaced with whatever the current version physical control is, is running right now. So I'm sorry about that abbreviated version because I don't have the council report in front of me. So I guess with that, if you guys want to nail me with questions, I'm, I'm open for that.
Thank you, Chief Gear. Anybody have any questions? City Manager Zabel?
Mayor, thank you and thank you, Chief. I, I think that you did great from memory. But just a couple of items, I'll, I'll add to it. As the chief says, there's sufficient funds to, to cover both those expenditures. Three hundred and ten thousand dollars for the, for the actual fire equipment and then ninety-five thousand from the ambulance fund for the ambulance equipment. And you see that in your agenda report. And then secondly, I'll, I'll note that this actually authorization comes in the form of a ordinance, which amends the budget, which is something a little bit different than we've done in the past. And we're trying to do that this year as we get through the, as we work through the biodeal budget is, is get a, a little bit tighter process to, to council member, member Alvarado's point earlier. Get a little bit tighter process so that we aren't looking at big massive. We still have, we'll still have an amending budget ordinance. You know, this fall to look at the budget as we will every year. But we're trying to keep track, particularly some of these bigger purchases like this. You know, the total here, you know, four hundred thousand, four hundred and five thousand dollars, that's, that's fairly significant. I mean, it's enough to, I think it's worth council's while to do a, an actual ordinance amending the budget. And it just helps us keep track of that later, helps the auditing process so the auditor can take a look at it. And it lessens our chance of missing it or the reason why, yeah, yeah, in the final budget process. And then creating an audit problem later. So there's a lot of reasons why we're trying to up our game a little bit in this regard. So that's, that's why you're saying an ordinance, which is not something, nor, normally we'd have you do a motion and then remind you about it later when we pass the, the amending ordinance later in December, so.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that, City Manager Zabel. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Just a quick one.
Yes, go ahead.
I was kind of left in suspense. Did the new, the latter item, did they, did they come out with the new version?
I'm s- I'm sorry, Councilman, I couldn't understand your question again.
I think it was the la- the la- the latter item, I think the defibrillators that we were holding off on and I, I didn't, I didn't get if we, if they were actually, they came out with the new models that we were, we were able to purchase or we had to go, they didn't do that, that update you were talking about?
No, you know, they, they, physical controllers kept telling us they're gonna come out with a different model and they haven't. But the older models that we have, they're not supporting anymore. So we're kind of a, a spot where we have to buy a newer version of the current model. I guess the best way to express that and still get warranty support on it. So we, we've, we've held off for years on replacing those. But we're kind of a point where we have to replace what we have right now with just what they're offering right now in order to get warranty work.
Gotcha. Thank you for that clarification. I was just curious.
Thank you, Chief Gear, and thank you, Councilmember Alvarado. Okay, we're looking forward to see that in next week's agenda packet. Thank you. All right, next we'll go to item E, ordinance amending the PMC Title twenty-three related to SEPA. Director Rick White, do you want to kick us off for that?
Yes, I will, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This agenda reported actually considers two issues. The first is the two thousand twenty Hearing Examiner Annual Report, which contains a very good summary of the Pasco Hearing Examiner's activities over this past year. I think overall, the Hearing Examiner has been very well received by the community and offers a very professional and expeditious way to go through the project approval process. I might also add that none of her decisions were appealed in either two thousand nineteen or two thousand twenty, for that matter. However, this year's annual report did contain a suggestion that the city look at our particular Pasco Municipal Code for the SEPA process. The Pasco Municipal Code reflects some very dated language, mid night nineties, maybe the late nineties, and hasn't really been revised since then. The City Attorney's Office has worked with our Hearing Examiner and city staff and has developed the proposed ordinance in your agenda packet for council's review. And it reflects consistency with the Washington Administrative Code and Revised Code of Washington that have been amended several times since the mid nineties. And is particularly important because it allows a better development of a record for any SEPA appeals and establishes consistent timelines for the processes noted in this particular PMC chapter. Again, we've accomplished this proposed revisions with input from our own Hearing Examiner and staff. And I think Mr. Briggs from Curro Ferguson Law is available, as well as I am, to try to answer any of council's questions on the proposed ordinance.
Thank you, Director White. Is there any comments or questions in the council? Councilmember Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. White, for the, for the brief summary here. So I have a question that's kind of, I, I guess stemming from a little bit of the report here. So we, we know that the, so it sounds like the Hearing Examiner as a role for the city is, is performing well. And that's been well received by our community and that's, that's fantastic. I know that, that significantly affected the duties of the Planning Commission. And can you speak at all about how that, how that, that shift has changed the, the commission's work?
Oh, I sure can. From my perspective, it's been overwhelmingly positive. The Planning Commission has been able to focus significantly this past year in particular on the comprehensive plan. They are of the added duty, which they just completed last month, of focusing on state mandated code amendments related to the comprehensive plan. They've looked at several key issues that are related to housing opportunities. If, if council recalls, staff received a grant from the state for House Bill nineteen twenty-three pertaining to affordable housing and fourteen oh six pertaining to a, an income stream, housing opportunities. And we've had, I, I think, a very good dive from the commission's perspective into those very, the, the policy-heavy planning questions for community growth. And in my perspective, anyway, it's taken the Planning Commission out of that challenging role of having ordinary citizens do quasi-judicial project permitting. And that's very difficult, I think, to ask of, of anybody. And I, I can't speak for all the commission, but my guess is it's actually been quite a relief to them.
All right, thank you, Mr. White, for that. I know from my perspective, being out of the quasi-judicial role where I get a look at my packet, I don't get to see that all the time of, okay, I have to change from what I'm doing. I'm not a representative of the community per se, but I am a judge ruling only on facts and within the record. That transition, I think, has been really positive, you know, certainly from my perspective. So if the Planning Commission is feeling the same way, then, then great. I'm, I'm glad to hear that. I just want to make sure I got the whole picture of, of this change. So if, and, and certainly I'd encourage any member of the Planning Commission who, who wants to share their perspective, I'd love to hear what they have to say as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. And I, and I agree with you. Being on the council for my previous terms, it was very difficult sometimes, you know, as community members and being out in the community and having to be careful with, to having discussions on these typi- particular topic and having to make sure that we, we shared those in, in the meetings. That was very, very, very difficult sometimes. And I, I think this process has been working wonderful. So and, and, and I really appreciate that all of them that none of them have been appealed and I, I think it's a program that was put together and, and really helped our council. So thank you very much, Mr. White, and we're looking forward to, to reviewing again these changes and, and putting it on the agenda for next week. Councilmember Serrano.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Mr. White or, or Mr. Briggs, I, I think it was who you said was there. Can you explain or, or give me some background on why we added sections nine, subsections nine through fifteen on the back end? Kind of discussing exhaustion of remedies and, I mean, was that just a flow with the, the SEPA section in the Washington Amended Code?
It was, yes. So, and I, and I would like to just start by thanking Director White for his work and assisting me and giving me good feedback on these proposed amendments, as well as the Hearing Examiner, Ms. Drummond was a ve- very helpful in this process. But these, if you look at the WACS, Section one ninety-seven, eleven, six, eighty, these proposed amendments are closely near those. They just put in operative language and sort of melded into our current code. And so those sections are clarifying that they need to, the applicant needs to exhaust remedies and that's there's two types of SEPA appeals. There's an appeal of a procedural determination. That's the threshold determination. As well as at the end, when there's an environmental impact statement. Those are the procedural appeals. And then there's also substantive SEPA appeals. That's the mitigation conditions or a permit could actually be denied under SEPA. And so what, what the amendment's saying in the appeal process is that the applicant can appeal the procedural as well as the substantive determinations. And that's in line with the WACS.
Thank you for that explanation because, you know, at, at first cut, it almost looks like it's limiting the ability to appeal. But without explanation, I think, you know, what you're saying is you're kind of calling out the two types of appeals and, and ensuring that our public has the right to appeal under either or. So I certainly appreciate that and, and, and I think that's very helpful explanation. So hopefully anyone that's, again, not that I think anyone read this, but if anyone saw this and was concerned, that certainly gives me hope that what we're looking to do is ensure all rights are there. So thank you.
You're, you're welcome. And part of that too is to streamline the process. We want to make sure if someone's moving forward with a permit application, that the appeal on those substantive SEPA, you know, determinations, conditions is done with the permit. So it's all one appeal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you, Councilmember Serrano. I gotta tell you, it really feels good to have a well-rounded council. Somebody has expertise in this area and, and asks those kind of questions and I appreciate that very much. So thank you for that and looking forward to seeing it in the, in next week's agenda. So next we will move on and it looks like we have finished with item five. And next we go on to miscellaneous council discussions. And I know City Manager Dave Zabel, you, you want to start it off?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I did have a few quick items and then one probably a little bit longer, but so I wanted to make council aware, Peanuts Park Farmers Market Groundbreaking, and we talked about that project a little earlier tonight, is slated for March nineteenth at two P M. So being in phase two now, you know, while we'll be wearing masks and socially distancing, there will be an opportunity for, certainly for council and the public to be able to attend that event. So wanted to make you, give you a quick heads up on that. We'll get, we'll get invitations out here shortly. I'm gonna hold off on a COVID vaccination site update for a minute because I got a couple of other things I want to chat about real quick, but one other item I, you know, that kind of came up last week, and I think council all received a similar communication, was a preliminary announcement, which there was a press release went out today and it was for a Columbia Basin College Law Enforcement Scholarship. That scholarship was organized, put together by Consejo Latino. It's a two thousand dollar scholarship and for the audience members listening and interested, their website consejolatino.org backslash scholarship would give you information or the CBC Criminal Justice Program landing page. So those are two ways you can get that information. And then a third item I wanted to chat a little bit about and I guess I'm kind of tag teaming a little bit with council members Roach and Serrano. And this has to do with kind of reviewing, and I want to give the council a little bit of background, in particular the public, what compliance in our meetings look like and, and what some of the issues that may arise. So obviously to, to echo David Replog's comments from earlier this evening, it's, it's great, I think, to have the opportunity to, to meet in person with the city council meeting. Our most, our audience is, is gone now, but we had several folks in the audience tonight as we did last week. People are, I think, responding well to it. And while there's a lot behind the ability to meet in person to the public, unless they've been watching the two previous meetings where council have discussed and authorized in-person meetings. They may not be aware of the measures that allow us to, to implement an in-person meeting option. So as I kind of worked with, well, as councils aware and from the prior, prior discussions, Governor's Proclamation twenty dash twenty-eight point one four, cities classified as a mixed venue. And some major points to understand and limitations of a mixed venue council meeting are, is primarily the in-person element of the meeting is optional. But a virtual element obviously is mandatory. The in-person element, or excuse me, the in-person option requires face covering. Or excuse me, the in-person option requires face covering, social distancing, additional sanitation measures. Uh, and a number of other uh, precautions. If compliance to these safety measures cannot be maintained, the city must either recess. The meeting to bring it into compliance, or perhaps continue or even cancel the meeting. And uh, so, and staff is, on top of that, staff's taking some additional steps, uh, as part of our opening. Uh, such, you know, just to help the public and, and to remind staff and, and council. Uh, so we're pre-screening, uh, folks as they come in, making sure the masks are on. Self-screening a, a questionnaire and uh, signing to alert the public. Uh, as they're, as they're walking through the hallway of, you know, have you had a temperature? Have you felt sick in the last several days? Uh, you know, the, the, the kind of COVID-like symptoms that we're all pretty acutely aware of, uh, a year into this. And then uh, there's other safety-related uh, requirements that make possible uh, an in-person meeting option, so. The, uh, I did send out a protocol to council last week, uh, and that protocol was created for issues and non-compliance. Uh, council and the audience, uh, was able to see that protocol initiated last week where we had a situation. We had. Two audience members enter the council chambers, uh, without face coverings, and per the protocol. Uh, the community, community members, and they had been asked before they came in and told, told the, what was gonna happen if, if they didn't. Uh, meaning council meeting would be suspended at the very least. Uh, per the protocol, the community members were again asked to, to uh, put on face masks, and they were actually provided masks. And some of you may have seen that last week, uh, when compliance was not uh, obtained, the mayor recessed the meeting. And in this case, the mayor and I met with the community members outside the council chambers to discuss compliance. And to hear their concerns, and uh, compliance was gained, you know, unfortunately. It was gained because those community members chose to leave the meeting rather than mask up and return and, and participate. And they were disappointed not being able to participate, uh, uh. And, and not necessarily to the point, but the mayor, as the mayor noted at the time, the, the conversation we had in the hallway was cordial. And the community members, I feel, were sincere in their beliefs regarding masking. However, they did not wanna force the council's hand in closing the public portion of the meeting. I think that's a fair assessment of what happened out in the hallway. Uh, realizing that that would require uh, us to, to close the public portion, reconvene virtually, and they didn't wanna be the cause of that. So in the days following, we've had some conversation among uh, uh, two of the council members. Uh, councilmembers Roach and Serrano and myself, uh, via email. Yeah, on what options, if any, are there for those members unable to mask up to attend a council meet, or. Unable to mask up to attend a council meeting in person. And uh, as I, as I mentioned before, you know, the operative restrictions, uh. Have to do with we are a miscellaneous, uh, venue. You know, some, one of the options we kicked around. Uh, was even uh, like a remote uh, desktop or a portal on council grounds. Where they could, you know, be outside that door and participate. You know, relatively handy to council if there wanted to be a discussion afterwards or whatever with one, one or two council members. And the public member, what have you, but uh, that actually makes it part of the venue. And so it require even outdoors, that requires uh, a mask. If you, if you're part of the venue. Uh. Even an outdoor venue, and I'd, I'd mentioned it before with the groundbreaking, that we're all gonna wear masks even though we're outdoors, cause that's, that is what's required of the. A governor, the governor's order. So, we, we really couldn't find, uh, whether outdoors or indoors or a hybrid meeting. Um, we really couldn't find a way to accommodate someone that wants to meet with the council. Um. In person without a mask. There's just really not a way to accommodate that at this point in time, given uh, given the restrictions that we're working under. As a government in a mixed venue under the governor's order. So we didn't, we didn't develop a, necessarily, we're unable to develop a solution to accommodate, uh, the desires from the community members not wishing to wear a mask. And meet with council in person. Uh, our, the councilmembers Roach and Serrano felt it was important to at least spend a few minutes discussing this, this evening. Let folks kinda know, here's some steps we went through to, to try to work through this issue, and, and there really isn't a way around it, that. At least not that we could find. And I, I turn it over to Councilmember Serrano. I know you had a couple of comments you wanted to make.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. I mean, that succinctly lies out, uh, sets out what we discussed via email. Um. I think ultimately, we're in this bind of, you know, under our oath, we're supposed to uphold the constitution and the laws of land. You've got a governor's order that has the force of law, uh, versus someone's ADA rights, right? Their Disabilities Act rights, or someone's religiously held rights, and we're essentially saying. No, if you have an ADA claim, you know, we don't, we can't allow you in here if you can't have a mask on, um. And so, that's why I appreciate that, uh, the city manager, staff. And our legal counsel looked into this as to whether or not there might be an opportunity to find. Um, some subset of this venue to allow, you know, I mean, Councilwoman Roach had. One of the ideas was, uh, I believe hers, to, to bring the outdoor indoor venue, like the Night at the Rock Story Club, right? Um, everyone wants to be part of that, but uh. But yeah, I mean, we, we, we wanted to find a way whereby people could, you know, again, express their rights or, or, you know, if they have a doctor's note. Um, I've got two kids that have them, you know, and so, I'm, I'm particularly sensitive to that. Um, and unfortunately, as it sits right now, we don't see a way whereby we can protect those rights and follow the governor's order. Um, now that might not make everyone happy, and unfortunately, in. The governing business, you're not always gonna make everyone happy. Um, but I do think it's important. That uh, you know, the local residents, uh, the local. Folks understand that we're trying to find solutions where we can be both protective of health. And protective of rights, and sometimes I think they've said it uh, probably best, sometimes you have the law and the rationale, and they don't always marry. Right? Um, a- and we're trying to do our best, people, I guess, is, is what I'm trying to say, and. And I appreciate that explanation because it shows that we're trying to come at this from a reasonable solution standpoint. And as it sits, you know, unfortunately, the two aren't quite aligned, um. And, and we feel that it's in the best interest of the city right now to continue as uh, we are with, under the protocol. That said, I think it was also important to open this to council so that uh. You know, we received an email prior to the council meeting, and, and it seemed like to me this was something that council should deliberate, or at least have. Some level of discussion to just make it open to the public as to how we're gonna approach this. Aside from reading the script, which I think, you know, the way we've rearranged that was very helpful too. Uh, so again, I think this candid to me, it covers a lot of checkboxes. Unfortunately, the ball's not moved. But uh, again, it, it, it shows the, the public that we're thinking of them, we're trying to make it so that everyone can participate. And, and that those people wouldn't necessarily be in here with everyone else who's willing to comply with the masks. So, we're trying to, again, find a way to, to make everyone have that opportunity to meet with us, aside from maybe a one-on-one. Um, as it sits, we don't see that, but again, I, I also thought it was important, uh, certainly if, if council has other thoughts, I'd love to hear it. Um, but uh, you know, we, we thought we'd explore it and share it. So, that's where we are.
Thank you, Councilmember Serrano. Councilmember Roach, did you have a comment?
Yes, just slow to unmute my mic, apologize for that. Um, you know, I do appreciate the conversation, uh, how it was intro'd by. City Manager Zabel and um, Councilmember Serrano, and. I think it's a, just a tough situation that we're in. Uh, everything that's said is, is accurate and. Um, you know, my sentiments are aligned, would like to be able to accommodate those people. Um, who want to come and address us, um, but do so with a measured amount, uh, amount of. Uh, reasonableness that, you know, we're also here as council members to conduct the public's business. And if we're taking an inordinate amount of time to work around and make accommodations, uh. To those who don't wanna wear a mask, then that's really cutting into our conducting the public's business. And so, you know, that, that being one issue, um, the other that. You know, I think it also opens us up to the, the criticism of how accessible are we. To other, other folks who, you know, might need interpretation or translation services. And so, you know, just my overall, well, my concern is, we need to have a. A level playing field, a, a equal access for folks, for the public to come in and address us, and. It seems like, even though it's not the most desirable option, that the virtual is the first. And in person, um, if you can wear a mask and if you can, your able-bodied to come in, so. That's where I'm at, and I am interested in hearing from other council members as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roach. And, and Councilmember Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and thank you, uh, Councilmember Serrano and, uh, Councilmember Roach for, for all your work, like. Discussing it in advance. Obviously, we, we as a body can't discuss this outside this meeting, so I appreciate, uh, making sure this came before us. Um, I mean, I think, I think this, this, the unfortunate slam dunk of this is that it's, as far as we can tell, a legal order. Um, the, it's been, continues to be ratified by the state legislature. Um, and therefore is, the emergency proclamations continue to be in effect. Um, and I guess my, my statement would be, I mean, it seems like we're, we are where we are, unfortunately. And if you're concerned about the governor's order, its impact on you, um, reach out to your, the governor's office. Reach out to your state representatives and senators and, and let them know exactly how you feel. I mean. Um, we don't, we, we've, I think, made the statements all the way along through this pandemic, that we don't necessarily agree with where the governor's, um. Uh, going with some of these things and, and whether or not the, all the, uh, orders in place are actually protective as opposed to restrictive or. The balance of, of rights that this, that this creates. Um, so please, do reach out. Um, your voice is important in this. Uh, we can do so much. We do reach out. Um, I know that the mayor has been involved in many conversations trying to advocate for the city and, and our people. And, and, you know, it's, I would just like to encourage everyone to, to make your, your voice heard as well. Um, if you, if you don't like exactly how we're do- how things are being done right now, it's gonna, it's unfortunately a state issue that you're gonna have to bring up to them, so. Um, I, I, uh, obviously the, the situation's been changing on us as rapidly as anyone, so we're. We're just trying to do the best we can to comply, um, keep everyone safe, keep staff safe, keep the public safe, um, and also follow our legal obligations, so. Anyway, so, so thank you all for your patience in this, and hopefully, we may not be at the right balance, um, but I think we as a city are, are finding the best balance we can. At this point, so anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney.
Mayor, this is, uh, Mayor Portem Barajas, if I may please?
Yeah, Mayor Portem, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Just wanna, uh, just real quick, wanna say. Uh, council, Councilmember Maloney, you're absolutely correct. Um, Councilwoman Roach, um, again, you're absolutely correct. And I think the best approach, uh, like Councilwoman Roach said, if there's issues. Um, we can revert back to virtual to avoid, um. Excluding any and all groups, uh, that, um, cannot wear a mask for whatever health reasons. Um, and yes, express your, your feelings about it to your, um. Elected officials, um, uh, and, but I, I'm in the feeling that we do have. Current health guidelines that we must abide by to, uh, control this pandemic. Um. Again, it's, it's, it, your, your, your voice is extremely important, and please express your feelings to the. Elected officials that can make changes, uh, that will impact, uh, um, the city. Um, but currently, um, I'm in the thought that, uh, we have guidelines that we must follow.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Portem Barajas. Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, this is, um, this will be any helpful. I don't necessarily have any, anything to add from a solutions perspective. I, I do wanna commend our council and our, and our, and our residents. I think the, this pandemic has really brought a lot of dialogue. And unfortunately, not a lot of that dialogue has been fruitful or productive, or has been, uh, very, um, curious. Uh, and, but I, 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 I certainly, uh, see in Pasco just a, a sense of, we just wanna talk about these things. We wanna figure out what we can do. Sometimes it's not much, sometimes it's a lot. Uh, but I certainly, um, know that, uh, what could come out of this is just our ability to have great dialogue. And so I appreciate, uh, Councilmember, um, Serrano and, and Councilmember Roach as they're beginning this dialogue. I, I don't have any, any particular, uh, ideas of how to make this better, but I, I, I certainly know that we, we, we can, and we can keep trying. Um, but, but more than anything, I wanna commend just our city for being able to have dialogue, being able to, within council members to. Always be respectful and always, uh, you know, try to bring out the best of, of our city. So, just wanted to, uh, say that.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado. Okay, alright, well said, and I guess I would just, uh, make a finishing remarks to this subject. Uh, is that, you know, I've been working very hard with, uh, other representatives of the tri-cities to, to move this city forward as. Uh, as quickly as possible and as safe as possible. And you know, I, I appreciate, I appreciate the dialogue and, and bringing this up to council, and I. I think the main purpose of, of this dialogue is to express to our community is we're doing everything we can. To move this along as quick as possible and as soon as possible, um, within, wi- within our. And meeting the requirements that we have to meet. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, City Pas- uh, City of Pasco is the only council that is allowing for. Public to come in and express, uh, their concerns. Unfortunately, it's with some restrictions to wear a mask. Um, I would commend this council for taking that step because we're leading, uh, the charge and, and you know, others, other cities are just. I've been asked by multiple people, uh, well, how did you handle it, and what do we have to do, and. And the reality is, is that we must be compliant, but we're doing everything we can to, to make it. And to bring it back to as much normalcy as possible, unfortunately, it's not perfect. But again, I would appreciate the, uh. The willingness of our, of our staff, of our staff to do what they've done to, to help us get to this point. And to our council, who is, uh, willing to take these conversations and, and these are, these are easy things to talk about, cause anything could. Could be miscued and, and mis- misinterpreted, but, uh, we are doing everything we can to try to get back, uh, on our feet and get people the opportunity. Uh, to, to express their opinions and, and do it within, uh, our, what we're required to do, so thank you once again, and I appreciate it. Was there anything else, uh, City Manager Zabel?
I did wanna invite, uh, Chief Gear if he could, and I, I know we're running a little long, but, uh, to give us a quick update. He's, he's heading back, or already has headed back over to the, uh, vaccination site, and I know he probably has some news for, for council.
And he's on the line now, or did you say he left? Chief Gear, are you there?
I am, Mayor. I, I'm here. I, I do wanna apologize for not being a hundred percent tuned up on those council reports. I had read them and, and, uh. Thought other people were gonna be able to present tonight, but I can assure you that the funding's there on our reserve funds, so, um, we're not asking for. Dollars that are not there, uh, that are not already, uh, budgeted, or not budgeted, but reserved. So we're talking about the test sites, couple of things. Uh, the test site, first of all, uh, is coming up on seventy thousand tests. Um, since September when we opened it up, and I was excited to see today. That, uh, our positivity rate at the test site is down to ten point three percent. So we're really getting close to the numbers that we need to be. I think that's, that's great at the test site. Uh, we are staffing down a little bit on the test site. Um, over the next, uh, week or two, because we're just not getting the numbers, you know, they're running somewhere in the two fifty to three fifty range a day. Um, on the vaccination site, um. Will be, we will hit thirty thousand vaccinations by Wednesday night. Uh, that is the highest number in the state. Uh, the next, uh, largest site is, uh, somewhere around twenty-five thousand, I think that in Vancouver. And are expected to be in Spokane's around nineteen thousand. Um, so we're, we're doing really well. Um, and actually, we are having trouble filling some of our spots, um, later in the week. So if you know people that are eligible and need vaccinations, uh, make sure they get signed up, there, there are open spots. Um. City Manager Zabel had asked me about some people that had got vaccinations that were not necessarily in the phase. Um, I'll, I'll just take a minute and explain how the standby or reserved lot works. Um, people are admitted into there earlier in the day, somewhere around noon to one o'clock. That are eligible for vaccinations and will be the first ones to receive any extra doses that we have. After about three o'clock, anyone else that comes in that is not eligible, but we can stack them up. Or in some days, we run two staging areas where we have eligible in the phase and not eligible in the phase. The problem we have is the Pfizer vaccines. We honestly don't know how many syringes we are going to get each day as we draw. It depends on the size of the needles that we're drawing with, and it depends on the temperature and how much it dilutes. And it is, it's a wild card, honestly, every day until eight in the afternoon to know exactly. We know how many vials we take out and how many syringes we should draw from that, but it never matches. And so over the life of this site, we have run over 2,000 extra draws in the last six weeks. And so we will get vaccines in arms. We're not going to waste those vaccines, and we're doing everything we can every day to make sure there are people in line. Whether they're eligible or not eligible, to make sure we do not throw a vaccine away at the end of the day. And that's the most important thing. That is our mission. That's our goal at that site, is to put vaccines in arms. So we have to be pretty fluid or flexible in terms of how we do that every day. So you'll see stuff on Facebook that says, well, I went to the site, I'm not eligible, I got a vaccine. Yep, that can happen. That can happen, but we get to throw the vaccine away. So with that, I guess if there's any questions?
Yes, Councilmember Alvarado.
Yeah, I'm wondering, obviously, there's folks who are taking advantage of that, and that's good to not have a. A vaccine go to waste. I'm wondering if that's a thing that the department frowned, would frown upon or. I'm just not sure. I think that there's folks who want to do that, but are not really sure if they're going to be tart and feather for doing so, for not being eligible and showing up. Or just kind of how, 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 how folks should manage that, something that folks should spread the word, that that's the way that you get a vaccine. I think there's a lot of confusion around that and folks are not really sure how to handle that or how to approach that.
I'm not either. We, sorry, we, honest to God, we have to almost wing that every day, not knowing what we're going to have. I wish I could tell you, and I'm a big guy on planning and laying this out and making it work. But I can't plan the last hour, not knowing what we're going to have to have. And, and the only way to be honest with people is say, if you want to go down there and sit and wait, you might get a vaccine. Even though you're not eligible. But it's only a small number every day, councilman. It ranges from two or three a day to maybe a dozen. So it's not a really good chance if you're out of phase to get a vaccine. But again, if those people, and there's people that come down and wait for that, and we will vaccinate them, the ones we have. I think Saturday, we did three people that were out of phase. Out of six or 700 vaccines that we did. So they get a chance, but it's not, it's not a solid chance. And the only, the only goal there is just not to waste the vaccines.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief Gear. And with that, there's nothing else except I just want to emphasize a little bit more, and Manager Dave Zabel touched on it a little bit. But I just, I just think it's worthy, and going back to the Consejo Latino is partnering with. Columbia Basin College Foundation to offer a scholarship for recent high school graduates seeking a career in local law enforcement. The purpose is to prepare candidates for responsible professional law enforcement careers. With special attention given to expertise in mental health, substance abuse, and Spanish language communication. The winning student will receive a $2,000 award and the scholarship may be renewed for a second year with satisfactory student progress. In this climate that we have, it's just timely and I just appreciate Consejo Latino and CBC. Working together to, to give this opportunity to somebody who's willing to get into this important field. And I just wanted to give a little shout out and just touch on it a little bit more. So I appreciate very much the efforts to do that and always appreciate anybody who could provide a young student. Or a student finishing high school an opportunity to further their careers in these type of fields. So thank you very much for that. Councilmember Serrano?
Just one quick piggyback off that. A group that is heavily focused or was heavily focused on police reform, spending their money. To educate local members to become part of the solution, okay? That's, that's putting your money where your mouth is. Many of us talk about doing things, and this group said we want police reform. They've worked on it for several years. And now they're investing funds, you know, jointly with the college. To ensure that their local community has that type of change. I mean, that, that needs to be applauded. And I appreciate both of you gentlemen for mentioning that. So thank you.
Right, thank you very much. Manager Zabel, is your light on for a reason? Okay, with that, let me go back onto the agenda. So with that, is there any need for executive session tonight?
Not this evening.
All right, so.
Mayor, may I interrupt for just one moment, one quick moment? I wanted to. And it's related to Pasco PD, what, you know, I want to definitely say thanks to Consejo Latino for setting up that scholarship. But also just to recognize, you know, that our, our local Pasco family, the Wilsons. Gracie Wilson, who just recently lost a spouse, Bert Wilson. She and her husband, former husband, were reserve officers for over 20 years in the Pasco PD. It's a big loss to the community and as well, I'm guessing, to the Pasco PD itself. And so just want to express my condolences and, you know, sorrow for the loss of. For all of us to have such upstanding member of the community.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roach, and our condolences go to them as well. Thank you very much. So with that, it is 8:57, and thank you very much for participating. We'll see you next week, and this meeting is now adjourned.